Okay, we're gonna get started here. We'll start off with commission member roll call.
Larson.
Here.
Keller.
Here.
Martin. Christensen. Jameson.
Here.
Hughes. Fry. Here.
All right, so we will come through. Do we, is there a chance to take a look at the current agenda? And if so, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? One second. Second. Okay. Okay. We all have a chance to take a look at the minutes from the previous meeting. So do we have a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
Approve. We have a second?
A second.
All right. New business. We're gonna, in a discussion and decision to recommend for approval by the Board of Supervisors, 2080 agreement between Mills County and the City of Council Bluffs for the two-mile jurisdiction.
Yeah.
Where do I go?
We have to go.
Right, go.
You can just stand right up here if you like.
Stand.
Yeah. Or sit.
Can we sit from here?
Yeah, you can sit from there.
No, we can hear you. Just so we know if your mic could hear us.
Okay. My name's Brandon Garrett. I am the Chief of Staff for Mayor Walsh with the City of Council Bluffs. And I'm here today with Courtney Harder. She's the Community Development Director for the City of Council Bluffs. Our Community Development Department oversees essentially everything that has to do with land use and planning and zoning and subdivision and permitting, all of that kind of in one house. Just a little bit of a history here. The City of Council Bluffs and Potawatomi County have for several years, at least since 2005, 2004, have had an inter-local agreement, a 28E agreement, on subdivision activity within our two-mile jurisdiction that essentially the state provides that we can enter into an agreement with a county on how subdivisions are handled. And so, we've had that agreement. We've renewed that agreement a few times over the years. Most recently, I think just last year, with this document of which you are seeing a chapter, Chapter 6, out of it, along with that associated map that you probably have in your packet, maybe the last page of your packet. There's no page number that I have on me to tell you. What this does, or how it operates between the City of Council Bluffs and Potawatomi County, and we would propose with Mills County as well, is essentially when there is a subdivision activity, this is not zoning, when there's a subdivision activity that occurs within the two-mile jurisdiction, which is just two miles from the city limits of Council Bluffs, there is guidance with this map as to what rules would apply in regards to subdivisions. Now, a great deal of that area, and if you have that map, you can see, yeah, with that map, you can see there's a kind of a bright pink line that goes around. That's the city's two-mile jurisdiction. Essentially, it's a buffer, a two-mile buffer around the city limits. So everything inside of that pink line is within two miles of the city limits of Council Bluffs. And that's where the agreement essentially applies when there's a subdivision activity. Now furthermore, inside of that map, you'll see that there's different colors. There's the, there's the very light yellow, which are areas that are really close to Council Bluffs, which doesn't apply to Mills County. There's the red areas that would essentially require extension of utilities from Council Bluffs. There's an orange area that doesn't come into Mills County. And then lastly, the dark blue area, which essentially, as we do with Potawatomi County, Council Bluffs essentially says, "We don't have intentions on ever being able to serve that area with roads and utilities, that sort of thing, and that that can just fall into the county's jurisdiction for the purpose of subdivisions." And so where you see blue on this map in Mills County, that's what we are proposing. Where you see red on that map, that would fall under, if it's red on the map and with inside the pink line, that's where subdivision activity then would fall under the city's subdivision standards. That's kind of a very high-level look at what this agreement means. I'll point to Courtney if there's something that I missed, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, part of the reason that we feel like going into Mills County and getting these standards in place is important is because we're getting a lot of interest just to our south with the needs of utilities. And understanding that the City of Council Bluffs is where utilities are really going to need to come from, specifically sanitary and water. Your services in Mill County just don't get up that far. Not wrong, just where, location-wise, it makes a lot more sense for Council Bluffs to serve. And so, as we're doing that, one of the things that we want to make sure of is that if we are doing those extensions, that we're doing them to the standards that the city has. Because eventually, what that means is what, how we do these agreements is that everyone who opts in to get our utilities also signs up for an annexation agreement. And that means eventually, they would be within our corporate borders. So, we're preemptively making sure that we get standards that meet our requirements. So that's building codes, that's proper stormwater detention, all the things that make sure that when we take things into our borders, that they meet our exact standards. And that's good for you guys too, because it also means that those things fall on the City of Council Bluffs versus us.
And in this particular area, I would say that stormwater detention is of one of the greatest concerns, because it is so flat, and we all know that now it seems like it is underwater every two or three years. Every two or three years, we have a hundred-year flood now. So, that is a major concern, because if we allow development to just build out there with massive parking lots and big roofs and no place to catch the stormwater, it just gets pushed right onto the neighbor, whether it's a farm field or another existing property. And so the city standard essentially accounts for that. We've already heard, we heard earlier today that Echo with their new building, they've had some struggles with stormwater at their new site, which we didn't have anything to do with that, but.
So, we didn't provide, you obviously don't need our entire land use study. You need one specific chapter. And that's the chapter that says, "How are we going to do the proposed land use?" And so that is Chapter 6 that we provided you. And what it does is it says that there are the three specific areas, like Brandon talked about, that are within our two-mile limit that we see as needing to identify. And that's the blue, which is, we don't ever see anything happening in this areas outside of rural development. That's probably an acreage of a house. That's maybe something, like somebody's putting up a new shed or something.
Or remains an ag.
Or remains ag. So, we want to make sure, we don't even want to review those things. They stay at the county level. You guys say, "Yep, we're gonna sign off on that." The yellow-ish color is, um, we want to look at it, but really, the counties, we're probably not going to do much with this area. What's really, we're focusing in is on that red color. And that red color is, we can see that there is, that's the I-29 corridor. There's potential for redevelopment there. And that type of development is going to be probably high users, industrial, like we're seeing, we're talking about, development that is going to need significant services. And if that is the case, we want to make sure that we can have some understanding of what's happening there so that we can make a proper adjustment. Again, most of that's going to be tied to utilities. They're going to need sanitary. They're going to need water. Right now, what happens, you could, so, just to, because there's been a lot of questions about annexation. I don't want to spend too much time on that, because that's not what you're looking at today. But just so that you understand, like, let's say a parcel not contiguous with our city borders. We can't just grab and say, "Yep, we have an island in the middle that is now City of Council Bluffs too." It had, we have to have all of our borders touched by state law. So, what we're doing is we're looking at opportunities that says, "Okay, farmer at the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter of section blah blah blah, you're interested in marketing your property." We can see that we would probably be able to serve that. Let's enter into an annexation agreement so that you can market it that way. You understand that the city has said, "Yeah, we can provide you services." If we ever get to you, you understand that you're going to be within the city limits. That means it may not happen right away, but it may happen eventually, and we're able to do that. We're able to make that extension of utilities, commit to that, so that folks understand that they will be potential, they will be part of the City of Council Bluffs when we get to that point.
We've spent a lot of time just now talking about extension of infrastructure, utilities, that sort of thing. But along with that also is our police and fire protection.
Correct.
And in particular, specifically, our fire protection. We, our Council Bluffs Fire Department has an ISO rating of one, which is the best that you can get. And what we are told is that is a significant savings on insurance. So, let's say you have a 50 or $100 million building or factory, whatever it is. I imagine that the insurance savings by having an ISO 1 rated fire department service you will be real money. And that not only attracts initial development, but I think that attracts additional development to that because of not only the utilities, but the services that are extended.
So, focusing on just the red color, because that's really the one that makes the most sense. On page 70 of your chapters that you received, it actually outlines what that means for what we're doing. So the service area goals, constructed in accordance with city standards. Do you guys have these?
No.
No.
Oh, shoot. Okay. Well, let me see how many extra copies I have. We can share one, can't we?
Yeah.
Here's a couple of copies.
We can share.
Page 70.
You can drive. Look at you.
So this actually outlines what those goals of chapter that we want to make sure that we're following. And I know this print's really tiny. I have to hold it funky too. But make sure we're evaluating that the standards are done to city standards, that we're extending sanitary if needed, that we're encouraging and development in areas that can be provided with urban services. So that's police, fire, water, sanitary. That we're not subdividing land that makes it so that it can't meet its full potential. We want to make sure that we're not dividing property so that it is like, we took off the frontage, and then we have something on the back cap, or it has this little flag that now it's really hard to do something with in the future. Can be fully serviced again with sanitary, subdividing along existing frontages, just like I said. Encouraging commercial industrial uses, if that's what we want here. And there's kind of a laundry list there of other things that we're trying to do, but it also identifies the policies. And that's how we actually will review what is happening. So, let's say a parcel is interested in coming in this red area. These are the things that we're going to look at with what they request. And we're gonna say, "Okay, well, this is, they are saying that they'll develop in accordance with city standards. Perfect. Check." They'll be required to annex potentially if they're existing with our borders, like directly adjacent to our borders, the city proper, I mean. Or, they may have to do an annexation agreement. We want to make sure they're squaring off their boundaries, that it's clear lines. We don't want to create funky-looking parcels. We want to make sure that we're facilitating those proper infrastructure extensions, because it's the leapfrog thing. So, okay, well, you know, ideally, what happens is your sanitary line continues to follow down in every parcel beyond there. The next one gets developed. The next one gets developed. When we leapfrog a parcel, it becomes infinitely more expensive for connections to happen. So, how do we make sure that we're making the most of the resources that we have? We're looking at, this does allow septic systems. Want to be clear, we're not telling people that they can't have a septic. But if we can service them, and right now, what we're talking about here is industrial and commercial development. We're not talking about residential subdivisions. So I just want to make that clear to you guys. I don't think any of us see something coming off of the interstate as a residential subdivision. So, the potential that they're going to have septics is probably pretty slim, but it could happen, and we would allow it if it made the most sense. Promote extensions of the municipal services and coordinate with our law enforcement, fire, and emergency services, like Brandon said. Interconnect as many parcels as possible to facilitate the best use of our resources. And making sure that there's frontage along all the streets. We don't want to cut anything off so that we're limiting what we can do in those areas. And then lastly, it allows for all subdivision activity that the city would have that right to review. So, again, we're not saying that, like, let's say I wanted to buy an entire block, and I'm just gonna develop that block. That wouldn't action, that wouldn't require action on the City of Council Bluffs, unless they said they needed our utilities, in which case we would say, "Okay, well, let's look at that then." But if you wanted to just, like Brandon says, "I'm gonna buy this tract of land. I want to put a house on there. I'm gonna keep it that, and then I'm gonna farm the rest of it." It doesn't have to come to the City of Council Bluffs. There's no action there that we would review. So there has to be a reason to put us into the mix, and these are the, these are how those policies would be enforced on our behalf. That was a lot of information. I too. Do you have any questions?
You said that specifically for the red area?
Correct. So, the policies are in here for the other areas, but the blue area, the policy is, we don't want that. We don't see that as being developed, and that's how we do it in Pot County too. We're saying, "You have the jurisdiction. We identify that this isn't something that we're going to be looking at in the next, in the foreseeable future as redevelopment."
And a lot of that has to do with the, two things that have to do with terrain. There on the west, you're obviously next to the river and very flat and floodplain, flood-prone areas. And then obviously, to the east, then you're up in the hills, and the gravity sewer potential for us isn't really going in the right direction towards our sewage treatment plant.
So the specific 28E agreement identifies that the purpose of this is to enter into an agreement that you understand Chapter 6 would apply to Mills County. And you would be adopting that. You're recommending the amendment to your comprehensive plan to enter, to put this policy into place as part of your comp plan. So, it has a 10-year agreement with two five-year extensions that we can agree to. And we do it that way so that we know that there's consistency in what we're adopting. And what will happen is somebody will come to Mills County Planning Department and say, "Hey, I want to do something. This is what I'm thinking about doing." And their staff is going to evaluate and say, "Okay, we can either do this on our own based on these policies, or we need to kick this over to this Council Bluffs Planning Department and have them give a chance to comment." That would be what's in the 2080 agreement. The next thing is that there, that if we need to modify anything, we're gonna, we're gonna, I tell everybody, "We're not gonna amend this without letting you know. We're not just going to change those policies. It will have to come back. You would have a chance to review that, or your supervisors would." And that's really the extent of it that you're trying to do for us, is to say, "We understand that we want this development to happen as a joint effort for our region, and this is the best use of all of our resources. Let's pull this together so that we're getting the most bang for our buck."
I guess the one question I have, and I don't know why this sticks in my mind. So, let's say they do that over here in the red area. And if I'm reading this right, they would then annex appropriately, appropriately what would become City Council Bluffs.
They would either, if they are at some point adjacent to our city limits, then they would annex immediately. However, in a lot of cases, if they're too far out, they'll have to enter into an annexation agreement where it would basically state, "At such time," I mean, we don't know if it's in two years or in 20 years, "At such time, you are adjacent, you do become adjacent, then you will be annexed at that point." So it's not immediate.
Because I'm just, I keep thinking about, obviously, the City Council Bluffs would have a large investment in this, bringing infrastructure in like that. What does that do to like the taxes in our county? How does that affect? I guess I can't get my mind wrapped around, because the City Council Bluffs needs to get their share for what they have invested.
So how levies work, your tax levy. You have several different tax levies. You have a county levy. You have a city levy, if you're in Glenwood. You have a school levy. You have a levy district. You have all kinds, debt service, all kinds of different things. What happens is if you are not within our corporate borders, you would continue to pay all the taxes that you're required to do with Mills County. That changes nothing. We, there's nothing that's changed there. If you become part of Council Bluffs, your levy goes up, and ours gets tacked on. So you're still getting your portion, and then we get ours on top of that.
I think there's also a portion that goes out too.
Yes, it lowers, because yeah, you're on a rural versus a city.
So you get, you'll gain the city levy, and then you'll lose a rural, I forgot what they call it.
General levy goes up, because evaluations obviously increase, but your rural levy is gonna go down, which on a county jurisdiction, right, you're only ever gonna, that rural piece of it should only ever really get smaller, because the towns, if you have a healthy, if you have healthy communities in there, and your communities are growing, right? Your general levy is always gonna go up. Your rural levy should come down.
This is for unincorporated areas.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. That makes sense. I just, you know, when you start bringing two different things together like that, I was just curious how that would affect.
And I think in a lot of cases, we would see that this land that's in the red, by and large, is farmland today and paying, you know, in terms of taxes, not paying a lot of money to Mills County. If it is developed, and, you know, with urban services and annexed, et cetera, I would expect that these are, you know, multimillion-dollar assessed properties that then Mills County gains significantly from when it was farm ground to when it becomes a warehouse or a factory or data center or whatever. Down in there, that, those are just the things that happen to come up the most.
Yeah, and I would also say you have to remember that your assessed taxes are different. Like, right now, perhaps all this land is assessed as ag. It will then convert to commercial or industrial, and that, that changes the rollback. That changes how much the county is getting right off the bat, because you're not assessed at ag. So even though your levy may lower, what you're getting assessed is very different.
How does it work in regards to when you're providing incentives to those folks that are coming in? Whether it be abatements or, you know, whatever, how does that work with the county and the city to ensure that?
Sure. So.
The county isn't getting short on.
We, by state law, can TIF back, Tax Increment Financing, which is, lives in the urban renewal law. So sometimes people get the, they say, "How much did you give that person in TIF?" Well, that lives in the urban renewal law, Chapter 403 of the state code. We are allowed to rebate back to developers, city and county taxes. Council Bluffs, if they're in, so I'm gonna say this is, all of this is gonna be city proper. Like, I'm gonna say we've annexed all of it, so that it, just for ease. Think of it that way. We're able to negotiate the rebates back. I will tell you that Council Bluffs, even if we can go up to 20 years, we don't do that. We require minimum assessed values. So we set a floor for every development that comes in and says, "You cannot contest your value below this number, because we need to make sure that, one, we understand how much you're going to give us, but also, that gives you some insurances of how much we're able to pay you back in rebates." We also negotiate the timeframe. So again, we can go up to 20 years. We don't do that. It makes our council very itchy to think of anything beyond 10 to 15 years. And that really depends on what's coming to us. And then we can negotiate the rebate amount, so the percentage we provide back. So ideally, we're getting that percentage as low as possible so that things are going to the taxing entities. We're going to have costs. We have police, fire, roadwork, all the things that require us to maintain that. We need to make sure that we can get something to help maintain those costs. And that number is split between. So if we give a 50% rebate, all the taxing entities, while they're not getting their full amount, they're still getting something extra. I would also just remind you that you always have to pay your base valuation. So if this land is assessed at $100,000, you always have to pay the taxes on that $100,000. It doesn't change how much the county is getting at this very moment. That will always stay the same. We cannot give that back. It's called the base valuation.
Minor detail there too is, what Courtney's talking about is, obviously, if we, the City of Council Bluffs are dealing with them, that means that they would have already been annexed.
Correct.
If, for whatever reason, they are somewhere else in there that doesn't get immediately annexed, they have to work with Mills County on the incentive package.
We wouldn't be able to.
We wouldn't have, we wouldn't have standing.
Yeah, we can't give them anything that we don't have.
There have been instances where, in Potawatomi County, we've worked with the City of Council Bluffs, and it has stayed in the county, and the county did the incentive package. But the annexation agreement was a condition of that, so they signed an annexation agreement. So then, when the city gets to them, they still have to come into the City of Council Bluffs, but it was rural development that happened at that point in time. And this study on the map, I want to, this wasn't something, this, where you see the pink line and the black lines. We had gotten together, it was during COVID-19, I believe, is when this kind of kicked off, and did a really thorough job. We thought this, I mean, there, we went back and forth several times, making sure that we had the right amount of time. We wanted to do that three-mile line. So then that way, there was some study already conducted in that area, so that's the black line that you see out there. So if an adjustment, if the city did have to annex something in, it doesn't immediately kick off and trigger, "Well, we need to go do more of a study again to extend that line out." We already have that thought process in there. The county line that you see in there on the, I wanted to kind of offer the flip side to what this is for you, and I've talked to the Board of Supervisors about this. So that, that red line that comes down in there for their two-mile jurisdiction and boundaries, right? Currently, any request that comes to Mills County to split land, and anywhere within that two miles, needs to go to the City of Council Bluffs for approval. And that's probably something that has not been happening up through this point in time to go through there.
That's current state code. Yes. That is current state code.
So, the 28E, when we sign into these 28Es with the City of Council Bluffs or any other community, it really is that the cities give back to the county on the blue shaded areas that's shown here on the map to say, you know, that we know we're not gonna be able to get to it, so we're not gonna apply our city standards. You guys go ahead and handle those things. But they could ultimately draw a hard line with any, with either Pot County or Mills County and say, "We want to see everything that comes within our two-mile boundary. We're gonna okay that or not okay it." So, that's why I see a big benefit to the counties in signing into these 2080 agreements. It gives us, you know, areas to work with, with our county residents on some standards, and then it's clear lines drawn to say, "Okay, the city needs to see this one." You have to go get your approval process through them. Now, like they said, ultimately, whether or not they decide, "Hey, we're just gonna do an annexation agreement with you and send you back to the county," or, "Nope, we're gonna handle this one all the way through." That's up to the City of Council Bluffs, and it is important, because we have to be able to protect any sort of utility service, the density amount to it, to be able to provide service to it. If we don't protect those areas and those large parcels for the city to take it in, and the city can't put the density on it that they need to put on it, you can't afford a sewer and water. And so, it is, it's vitally important around every community Mills County has to protect those large areas to make sure that they are able to cover their sewer and water costs when it comes time to do that. So, I mean, it really is just a benefit to Mills County and show a good faith. Council Bluffs is to build that partnership with them and enter into this 2080 agreement with them.
So before we did all this, and Matt can tell you, our map was literally a line around, two miles around our city, and it was a very old map that was incredibly out of date. It did not give us that flexibility. We literally could just say, "Nope" to everything, and we kind of did, because we didn't have any way to legitimize it. So there were things that we couldn't do, because literally our 2080 agreement said, "Council Bluffs can say no to, doesn't have the authority to give anything back to you." Now, obviously, we have a decent working relationship, so there was some give and take there. But this really does, like Matt said, it gives us that flexibility to say, "Yeah, we're never gonna get out this far. County, go ahead and take care of that, or, you know what, we mutually have interest in making sure that this is protected. Let's fall back on our policy." And it's been tested several times in Pot County since we got it. And working through it has been sometimes real, like, oh my gosh, what did we, we're gonna get through it.
And I think one of the biggest changes was, the previous policy basically said, "If you cannot annex immediately, then the answer is no, you can't do your project." Whereas now, we have the annexation agreement. Whereas now we have the annexation agreement option, if you can't do it right away. We'll go, we'll enter into an agreement and you'll come in when we get there.
And we, we are talking a lot about subdivisions in the, in that two mile area. But it really comes down to property line adjustments too, right? Any moving of a property line within that two mile area, and that's a lot of the times in the, in the two mile area. The old agreement that we operated under, that's where we would always have, um. A lot of those problems where somebody just needed to adjust a property line or square up a boundary. The city had no way to say yes, because it was like, if you move that property line, you have to be able to annex in to the town. And so, I mean, it was kind of on our, ease on our part, because obviously, when you, when you tell those residents that, it was either. You know, the next thing you knew, they were sitting in the mayor's office or they're sitting in the board supervisor's office, and then everybody's getting pulled into a meeting to try to figure out, how do we make this work? We had, we had no way to do it, now we do have those tools in front of us to be able to make these work and it does run. It runs a lot smoother and I think it's on, just from, you know, obviously, the building and zoning department in Mills County. It's different with property, property splits and property line adjustments. Then what in Potawatomi County, we run that process for the county. Uh, everybody wants to split, uh, or divide property, move a property line, that process starts in the planning, uh, office in Potawatomi County. Down here, I s- I still really haven't gotten a grasp on it, it sounds, I mean, it's, sounds like it starts in the auditor's office. And I'm not sure what part of that comes through the review for the building and zoning department to look at it. The next, we just got our zoning ordinance changed and updated, you know, started that change process up through. The next ordinance that we have to get updated is our subdivision ordinance, because at some point in time, the planning commission was pulled out of the Mills County subdivision ordinance. You all have to have some sort of review of the subdivisions. Plats that come through on the preliminary plat process to the final plat process, you all need to have some sort of say or recommendation in on that. And right now, everything is just going directly to the board supervisors, so there may be things happening out there that Audrey and I don't even necessarily hear about. Until somebody comes in for a permit on, we're like, well, is that a parcel, where'd that parcel come from, cause last we knew it was, you know, one chunk of ground. So that'll be the next, like, our next venture into it is how do we modify that subdivision ordinance to make sure that the planning commission's aware of things, to make. Subdivisions happening in the county to make sure that we're aware of those things. And how do we align that process, but with the auditor change and stuff that's, you know. Could happen down here in Mills County, we're kind of waiting to see how that's gonna play out through the election and then we'll, we'll start down that path.
I mean, Matt, is there anything con wise we need to, I mean, it seems pretty cut and dry to me, but I mean, is there anything? Think about or, um, sorry, on county level?
The con of it really is that whole, say, um. Say the county decides, you know what, no, we're not, we don't wanna sign into this twenty eight agreement with city council plus. And then the city of Council Plus says, comes, they'll just come back and say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna assume subdivision control over our two mile area. Anything that comes in that area, we need to have a full jurisdiction over. So, that's, that's kind of it, and then any, and that's not just, and I don't wanna just say city council plus, that could be any community in Mills County. Glenwood can do that, Malvern can do that, you know.
That has zoning code.
Yeah, Tabor, all of those ones, uh, in the county could potentially say that to Mills County. Say, no, we wanna have full control, and what we've seen in Potawatomi County is the smaller towns, and it, and I've already spoken with Malvern down here. They are taking a greater interest in their two mile jurisdiction. Uh, I, I think the push on that is those wind turbines coming in, uh, a lot of them were under the impression that, hey, our two mile jurisdiction protects us. From those wind turbines coming in, and it doesn't, because they don't subdivide ground when they put them there, they just lease the plot of ground. And so that has been something that each one of them are, are looking at and they wanna know what activities going on within that two miles. And, um, so we have, we had, so we had instituted that in Potawatomi County now. We had only done for years, ever since I started with accounting, anything that was within a half mile of the small towns, we would send to them. And just to get their approval on or let them know, but offer them comment on it, we're, you know, to subdivision to go through. But now we do anything within the two mile area of it, because they have gotten so sensitive about that two mile jurisdiction. And, and we have done a lot of conversations with them, just educating to make sure that they understand, this is, you know, you, yes, you have a two mile jurisdiction, but it is for subdivisions only. And you don't necessarily have zoning control or building control of what that is out there.
And I guess as far as the, uh, those, uh, change that we would have to do to our comp plan and that would come back. Is this gonna go ahead and update that, or do we have to do something separate with the comp plan to bring that into it?
So the request should be to recommend approval amending your comp plan. Um, and then the county will actually, is my understanding, the county would adopt the twenty eighty agreement as part of resolution. Show your recommendation, I don't think they have to recommend approval in the twenty eighty, is that correct, Matt? I don't think that's how we have to do it, I thought we just needed them to. Let's see here, it says, hang on, Chris is very bill, very thorough for me. Um, recommends approval of the city of Council Bluffs in Mills County to amend the Mills County comprehensive plan. By incorporating chapter six, proposed future land use recommendations of the joint city county land use study. And the associated twenty eight E two mile limit agreement between the city of Council Bluffs and Mills County into the plan document. That's what you would be recommending approval of.
I think basically you're approving it as an appendix to the document.
Okay, is there something we need to do differently?
That's on our agenda regarding approving or recommending those, it's just a twenty eighty.
It's the, it should be a, amending your, approval of, amending your, recommend approval of your amending your comprehensive plan.
No, procedural wise, you should be fine, just make that a recommendation.
Any discussion from anybody, does anybody have any other questions or? Well, yeah. Does anybody want to make a motion to recommend, uh, or move to. Amend, approve and amend the, the amendment to the comp plan? Do we have a motion?
To recommend for approval, right?
Yeah, it says, well, to amend. Or is it the twenty eighty?
Right, it just doesn't say it on the agenda.
So we would need a motion, correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, a motion. Uh, should I just read this portion of it to make it?
You can, yep.
Let's go ahead and, okay, we're, uh, if there's a motion, the city council plus recommends approval of the request from the city of Council Bluffs. And Mills County to amend the Mills County comprehensive plan by incorporating chapter six. Proposed future land use recommendations of the joint city county land use study. And the associated twenty eighty two mile limit agreement between the city of Council Bluffs and Mills County into the plan document. Have a motion? I'll make a motion. Do we have a second?
All seconds.
We have a second, all, all approves, say aye. All opposed, same sign?
I didn't either, just saw me, Matt showed me.
Special events permitting, um. Codes, another modification, it's gonna have to be a modification to the zoning ordinance about special events in Mills County. I think, you know, you, you all are probably aware of, they had the Cars Concert down there at the racetrack. Individuals got shot down there, whether it was on the property, off the property, it was driven based on the fact they were having an event at the racetrack like that. We also have a number of residents, uh, contacting us who are wanting to do special events on their own property. And some of the special, some events have been going on, um, for a few years that are not allowable land uses. And, um, they would like to be able to continue those events, like the Tabor hair race, the motorcycle. Real deal that just went on, um, I had sent them a cease and desist letter for that event, because it is not an allowable land use. And there was some, um, confusion over whether he was charging or not charging, but we had a printout from the internet showing, you know, that. Fees were being charged to race on the property and, so we have to have some sort of regulations put in place to kind of protect. The area, other area residents and or just reimburse the county for time spent by the sheriff's office. By EMA, by the fire department that would potentially have to respond to these events out there. And, um, that can be done through special events permitting. And, uh, so, we're gonna, we're, we're looking, we've already started looking into it, we're gonna try to put together some, uh, couple of different proposals. We'll bring it to the planning commission first for you all to kind of sort through and see what you want, you would think would be best. And then we'll give the board supervisors a proposal on it after the, you know, following your recommendation of it.
I think we went through that hair scramble thing a couple of years ago, didn't we?
Last year, actually, you, last year you did in November, yes.
I spoke to the property owner about it, I mean, he's, he was under the assumption that he was like, I, I think I'm okay, and I'm like, no, I don't. You know, there's nothing that we have on the book showing the art, uh, Audrey did a great job of pulling all the different minutes and discussions about it. I said, I think what happened was, is that there was some discussion maybe right previous when you got your notice of violation and then maybe. Followed up just a little bit afterwards, but I'm like, you never submitted for a formal code change, which really would be on them, it doesn't necessarily have to be on the county to initiate these processes. And I actually feel like it's better when a resident or business owner initiates these changes versus the applications constantly coming from the county to modify. The ordinance, um, because I told him, I said, if you don't initiate this process. It could very well be that motorcycle races don't make it in as like, as a special event into this process. So I'm like, it would be, you know, it's to your interests to try and initiate these and come in. But I'm like, there's, there's been a number of complaints that you haven't necessarily addressed over the years of having this, which, you know, anything from noise. To traffic, to parking on the road, dust, uh, the emergency response that has happened out there, there were, you know, something happened with that last year. So, um, and it's kind of the same thing with the racetrack gentleman. Where I did, we use, in, in Potawatomi County, the sheriff's office up there uses a contractual agreement with places like that, we use it with West Fair when they hold their. When they were holding their big concerts out there. And, uh, so I felt like we, I, I tried to somewhat get through to him was that, you know, we have a lot of experience in this area. On how many officers you need to have down there per, uh, thousand people in order to make sure you have a successful event and that everything comes off fine. And, um, because of the ice cream social that's coming up there, and so I think that they are going to start utilizing that agreement. To make sure that they have enough people on site to do it. But, uh, it is just, you know, those property owners do need to reimburse that cost of the sheriff's office and whatever. If AMA has to up nine one one center staffing during that event.
I recall, I think, um, the board was kind of split on that thing too. If anybody really was in agreement, were they?
Probably not, they, you're, you're correct, I'm sure they were split. I'm sure they probably were.
So, I guess we gotta come up with an agreement that everybody can live with.
Exactly, I think it was their understanding at that time last year that he was not, that there was no charges, so it's just like, hey. You know, come on out to my property and raise and we'll pull some money and hand out prizes and stuff like that for you, but. I, you know, when I was talking to the county attorney's office and I said, you know, if you're, if you're the next door neighbor. And your, your one neighbor decides to invite four thousand people to their property in a day, I mean. Well, that's an issue, it's a law enforcement issue, it's everybody's issue, I mean, we have to.
So did anybody come in after that event this year and?
Not yet, it just happened this last weekend.
Oh, it did, okay.
Yeah.
And then we do have another ag tourism.
Ag tourism is requesting to do some festival style.
Yep, yep, so.
Things on his property.
So you're starting to get quite a few.
Cause when you start incorporating live music alcohol, it doesn't really become an ag piece anymore, so.
So is the ice cream social kind of?
It's gonna happen.
September twenty eighth, so stay away from twenty nine thirty four corridor.
They did that last year too, right?
They did do it last year as well.
We had a pre-meeting this year on it and it, I'm hopeful that the pre-meeting that we had is gonna make for a better traffic experience. Because it does sound like they were, you know, they were locking people out of the parking areas until a certain point in time, so you had people waiting for that time period to be able to go park.
Yeah, so they were sitting at BP and Love's taking up space there and not. Doing any, you know, getting any services from them, they were just sitting there waiting.
The traffic light was off time and the gentleman didn't, you know, they finally found the guy who was, who could run the traffic light, he showed up there later, but by that time, you're gridlocked. This time, that person's gonna be on staff ahead of time to be able to run the traffic light to keep traffic moving.
And then the other complaint was Agrovision, there was a farmer that actually, because we're middle harvest season. He had to walk from Love's down to Agrovision, supposedly he was offered a ride, he declined. Okay, great, but he couldn't get down there in his vehicle because of all the traffic.
They're gonna leave one lane that goes direct to ag.
Yeah.
But, what is this ice cream social, who hosts that?
It's called an ice cream cruise, it's, yeah, um, it started over in Omaha and it was just a few cars. And they would literally just drive around Omaha showing off their fancy cars, whatever. And then it's just, it moved over here and it's just grown exponentially, I guess twenty nine was backed up. Last year, thirty four was backed up.
Yeah, we, we were going to a, a band deal over in Papillion, same day that was going on. So in the morning, we, why are all these cars coming here, and then in the evening, it was.
You couldn't get home.
Where do they, where they cruise?
They don't really, they just pull up to, they, they go all around that racetrack, they line that racetrack with their show cars.
And they just sit there.
This is a big car show. But they have, I wanna say, it's, it was either thirty five or forty states are represented in that car show. There was a couple of different countries, I mean, they put up a big map of where all these people signed up to, to come from, and I think one's coming up from Australia. Uh, so it's a big deal, it's a huge event.
Is there a benefit to the county though? I mean.
They do. They, last year, they donated ten thousand dollars to, so it's a nonprofit deal. And they, um, they went to some charity, not necessarily in Mills County, but residents of Mills County could potentially benefit from that charity.
The, the group that, it's not, there's a group that. Organizes it, that gr- and then the racetrack hosts, so the group actually donated to like Wounded Warriors. And I think there was another veterans group, so Mills County veterans could potentially. Benefit from it.
Still have emergency issues and.
Correct, that's why we had the pre-meeting this time.
Yeah.
And the state, the state patrol was here, the sheriff's office was here, AMA was here. We had a, we had a room full when we had the pre-game meeting on it, but.
Is that coming soon then, before the subdivision? I'm assuming before the subdivision or is it gonna wait until after the, you know, the election and stuff like that?
Uh, the subdivision one, we'll probably hold on and just kind of let this, let that play out. Because we, I mean, we really need to get a full handle on subdivision process of how it's being tracked and run through the system. Because we, I mean, we really need to get a full handle on subdivision process, or how it's being tracked and run through the system. So this, this will probably come first, the special events piece of it. I can't guarantee that it'll be next month, um, because we still have to have some conversations with the board supervisors about where they even want us to start at.
Got anything else?
Of course, Lynn.
Anybody opposed?